Okay, thank you. All right, good evening. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole for Monday, June 26, 2023. We are in person in council chambers. Clerk McCure, please call the roll.
Tonight, we have Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Norris, Counselor McCabe, Counselor Sheffield, Counselor Piazza, and Finance Director Yuhas.
Okay, thank you. All right. Just to let you know, at the, when we get to the end, before we go to adjournment, I'm going to ask about adding an executive session onto this, and it'll become clear a little bit later on. And when we talk about moving these items, right now, next Monday, the 3rd of Monday, the 3rd of Monday, the 3rd of July is a scheduled mayor and council meeting. Will you guys be able to attend that meeting? Because if you can't attend that meeting, then we're going to have a special meeting during the week because of a couple of things on here, but also because of the executive session. So can you make 7:30?
I can't.
I mean, it's a normal Monday, okay? Good. All right, we'll move forward. New business or referrals? The first one is Grotton Utilities City Works System by Trimble. Sue?
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Grotton Utilities is seeking approval to move forward with Phase 2 of the multi-year project for City Works Computerized Maintenance Management System, also known as an asset management system. This was, this project, this multi-year project, was originally presented to the Committee of the Whole in April of 2022 by Director Gade, and it was approved by Mayor, Phase 1 was approved by Mayor and Council on 5/2/22. The Utility Commission has approved Phase 2 on June 21st, and Phase 2 will incorporate additional elements of this multi-year project, including fleet management, that will be available for use citywide.
Questions or comments from the council? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. Did we split this up in two phases, like, so that we would have one in the fiscal year prior and one in the fiscal year so it wouldn't cost so much as that?
It's intended to be a multi-year project for resource purposes, but also for funding purposes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Norris?
How did Phase 1 go?
Phase 1 went very well. We have a few small punch list items that remain, but it is essentially complete.
Okay, and this is the second year of the three-year, so is there a Phase 3?
There will be a Phase 3.
Got it, thanks.
And to use the term three-year, again, it would depend on funding and resources, but we anticipate a three-year project. Should funding not be available or internal resources not be available, it may extend beyond that.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council of 7:3, 2023.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. Because of a couple of weeks ago, let me verify that the 3rd is there. So that is, that is the correct date. Okay, Parks and Rec. Mary, if you could come up. First thing is auditorium rentals.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, let's see, the first one we have, so the auditorium rental has current, is currently or has been in the past with the city clerk's office. It has been, we've been approached from the Parks and Recreation end of, to have Parks and Recreation take it over. Since we do all the other rentals of pavilions, the Zabursky House, we have staff as necessary for building monitoring and whatnot, so there had to be a change to the resolution that was made back in 2017, I believe. So we're here to make that change, so that it falls under Parks and Recreation now.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Is there a reason that we're changing that process, or is it just because we think that it doesn't belong in the clerk's office?
Right, we think it doesn't belong in the clerk's office, and we're going to consolidate where all our rentals are coming from, which is out of Parks and Rec.
So do we not have, so the only rooms or buildings that we, or structures, I guess, because of pavilions, rent out, all goes through Parks and Rec already? Is that what you're saying?
That's right.
So there's no other rentals in the city? And, um, okay, that's it. Thank you.
Counselor Carter?
As far as, looking on the agenda, as far as why it fell into Parks and Rec, but the, what I just heard was a simple reason, it's just because of all of the rentals? Is that the simple reason?
That's the simple reason.
But does that make it easier?
Makes it easier for everybody.
Okay.
Then everything will fall, you'll have one central point of contact.
Is that something that, that, um, I mean, is that something that you were willing to?
Yes. But no, this is actually something that we've discussed in the past departmentally, even back when Clerk Patrick was here. She was the only one that did it, so there was no backup, so we were learning it, and a lot of people call our office anyway, looking for the use of it. It's in the job description for our, my administrative assistant, that's one of her responsibilities as the backup, so it's not something, it's just, we'll have to learn how to, we haven't done it much, so we'll have to, like, learn how it all works out, but there's a pretty good detailed resolution that tells us the pricing and everything else, so.
And with the new, with the new city clerk, we thought this would be a good opportunity to do this. This was not a mayor said, it was a collaborative effort between Parks and Rec and our offices, so that's where this come from.
Okay. I just wanted to add, that's from past discussions, as far as what the Parks and Rec director and Parks and Rec staff have been taking on, um, over the years, I think this is a testament to, um, what, what we say, with the increments, with the raises and whatnot, you know, everything's in line. So I just wanted to add that today, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting at 7:3, 23.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, the donation, disc golf?
So yes, we had a gentleman, who, he's actually approached us a couple of times, he has disc, disc golf baskets, I have to say that slowly, and he, he don, wanted, he donated one to the city along with a box of discs. This town obviously has a disc golf course, but this will give people the opportunity in the city to practice. It's just one currently, but they can practice on it. There's also, like, he utilizes, like, the game of horse that you can play in basketball, you could play that with kids. So our goal is, once, once we get a concert off the ground, we're going to actually put some of those discs in there and let the kids play around with it, so they can see and experience disc golf. But the donation has been made, and it is, it is in the park up the hill from the farmer's market field area, under a light, so it's visible, you know, to the police department and, and everything else, and he was graciously donating it, and if we find that we want more, he'll, he'll work with us to get additional baskets.
Questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
Yeah, I drove by it a few times, I wasn't sure, like, oh, the disc net there was sticking up there, I was like, that's, that's nice, I'd seen that in the other places, and we want to potentially add more, I guess that's what the goal is.
Yeah, potentially, we, we picked the location that we did due to the fact that it does give us abilities to go other directions in the park, so that we could actually have a course if we wanted to, or we could put multiple in that area and they could, you know, back and forth.
Yeah, like having a tournament or something, competition.
Yes.
Okay. All right, great.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Piazza?
So you said the discs aren't available as yet?
Well, I have them, they're in my vehicle. I wasn't quite sure, I, you know, I didn't want to, I'd probably leave them when we're doing events, that's why I thought maybe starting off with the concerts in the park, and then we would have the discs available for people to come to the office to grab, so that we have a little bit of control, we don't want to all of a sudden leave the discs there and then not have any. So I figured at a concert in the park, it's active, there's kids there, we could, I can monitor it a little bit, and then if, you know, they can want to come to the office during office hours and, and borrow the discs, we could get a name and a number, so that way we know who has them, and then, you know, go that way initially, you know, if, you know, some people might have their own discs if they play this, so it gives them the opportunity to use it also.
Is there an age, a certain age that they could sign for it?
I would have an adult sign for it.
Okay.
So that way we have that accountability.
And so they will be available during the concerts in the park?
Oh, I'm going to put them out there, yes. I'll put a few out into the, into the basket itself, so that if the kids want to see how it works, they can.
And hopefully we'll have one this Friday, right?
I'm hoping.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 7:3, 23.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Any Farmer's Market grant award?
So our Farmer's Market, Market Manager, Tim, applied for a farm viability grant through the Department of Agriculture, for $5,000 of which we have received. Our grant is going to be used for matching funds for SNAP, EPT, community outreach marketing, and a permanent sign at the corner, so that it's, it's going to say home of the City of Grotton Farmer's Market, some type of planters or whatever, some kind of permanent sign instead of the, the banner that's there. We also want to try to reach out, New London used to have a farmer's market at Williams Park, and they no longer have it, so we want to try to broaden our marketing efforts to, you know, let other areas know that the farmer's market is here.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Norris?
I was just going to ask, you don't have an exact breakdown on what you could have used this $5,000 for.
I thought I did, hold on.
I'm actually just trying to get an understanding on how much you think of that $5,000 would be for SNAP?
It was $2,000 for SNAP.
Okay.
I know that, and then I believe that then the marketing would be, oh, here it is. Nope, that's not it. There's numbers on here, but it's not, no, I don't have that. I know 3, $2,000 was definitely for SNAP, because we had, we had reached out to other community organizations to kind of help us with SNAP, matching, and we did get another $2,000 from Grotton Utilities for that too, so we'll have $4,000 to match with SNAP for EPT and SNAP.
That's awesome, thank you.
Yep.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um, I was going to ask, so is, is there marketing specifically towards the SNAP EBT match funds that maybe we could pass out or have a sign or something at the food box distribution?
We can do that, yep, we can get something together, yep, that'd be a good place to get that, so, and if anybody wants, so if a person comes in and puts $10 on their EPT card, we're going to give them another $10, that, no charge to them, so they'll have $20 worth of money to buy food at the market. So that's how it will work, so.
That's very cool, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 7:3, 23.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
All right, Public Works, Shore Avenue Seawall Reconstruction.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm looking for you to support the approval of a contract to GSA, GZA Environmental, for the construction management and inspection of the seawall down on Shore Avenue. We put an RFP out, we received three bids. I apologize for the late handout of the sheet with the three bids, but I believe you had reached that. We had proposals from BL Companies, SLR, and GZA. GZA is approximately $175,000 less than the next low bid. Their bid came in at $163,700. Very good savings. Construction inspection is the primary reason, so GZA anticipated a four-month construction window, while others, when they did their proposals, anticipated a six-month proposal. The opinions of probable cause for this piece of it, the construction management and the inspections, was 270. And again, they came in at 163,700. We did some history on this particular company, they've done extensive work with shoreline reconstructions. I quickly looked, searched, they'd done a, recently done a dam in New Jersey, work on the Hudson River, River Pier, they're also doing work over on the state pier in New London as a contractor, okay? Totally anticipated project cost of this was, from 2021, was $2,702,799.03, and that's for the whole project. Again, that, you know, we're going to have to get that out, I won't have the true cost of that until the bids go out, bids for that are anticipated to go out in January 2024, so I'll have that number then. The key points for this project are, we're looking to, I have to have, there's a cofferdam, a temporary seawall that's going to be in place, it's going to retain the water back while we do the work, that seawall, that cofferdam needs to be in place by July, and then I have to pull that out after December, so, and the project should take us past that. And the driver for that is the eel grass that is in the water right there, we need to protect the eels and the bedding and that type of thing. With that being said, I'm looking for your support to move forward with the GZA.
Okay, any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor.
And then Counselor.
Um, so, since we don't have the whole bids in front of us, the, the only difference is the timeframe, because that, the math to me doesn't work out. If you, for example, take the, the other two quotes and do a ratio for four months instead of six, it's still much, much higher. So is there a difference in materials or contractors, or, you know, like, are they subcontracting more the other companies? It just seems odd that's so much lower.
So, again, after we looked into it, GZA had anticipated a two-month construction window. The others, when they did their estimate, had estimated, you know, anticipated six months. I'm sorry, four months, a two-month difference between the two, so six months, so that's quite a bit of hours in support for inspection work and that type of thing. I believe they're also going to self-perform a little bit of the work, I think, Ron, we talked about that, I don't know if you want to speak.
So the, the main highlights and the differences, similar to what Pill was saying, was that GZA had a four-month window with one inspector, meaning around 640 hours of inspection time roughly. SLR was 1,040 hours, so just about double, and BL was up over 1,500, based on what they thought was going to be the timeframe when they reviewed the construction drawings as a part of this bid packet. This is only for engineering, for bid preparation and construction admin services, so the big piece of it was that construction admin services. The other piece of it, using an example, the eel grass study, GZA will do that in-house, and that was proposed at around 17,000, I believe the number is, whereas BL would have to outsource that, and it was up over 50, just as an example of other things that were, were in there, but the construction admin being the, the biggest piece. Heidi and I did talk to a representative from GZA today, I mean, I think a big concern is when you look at those bid proposals and how significantly lower they are, it does raise a red flag. So what it was, was that these, their packages weren't quite apples to apples, so we did try to true them up. We did speak with a representative, ensuring that if this project was to go over the four month window, that they would have a construction inspector still on site, that they wouldn't just pack up and leave. They did assure us that. They are a large firm with over 700 employees, so they do have a big pool, it's not a smaller niche firm that is located out, I think they were headquartered in Norwood, Mass, I believe he said, and, but they're a big northeastern firm.
So they're pretty confident in that inspect, because that's also a big difference, the amount of time they think it's going to take to do the inspections?
So, so when we, we did the quick math too, to back into, if you were to take their hours, come into an hourly rate, multiply it by the higher hours of the 1,500, they were still the lower bid. So we, so it's not like just based on hours alone, we did try to true the proposals up to make sure they'd still be low bid in case that were to happen, because this is a time and material contract, it's a, it's not just a set lump fee.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Sheffield?
What's the timeframe, I guess, to, to sign off on this bid?
So, construction is looking to begin on, in between July and December of 2024, to get the work done.
No, hold on.
So, in, in the conversation today, we did do a kind of a, a rough time, timeline to get in. The biggest piece, as was mentioned earlier, the cofferdam has to be in by...
June 25th, July 25th?
Some, there's a, there's a deadline that that has to be done. If that cofferdam is not up, this project will end up getting delayed again for another year, because we would not be able to do work on that from, through September. So working with the contractor again to ensure that from a timeframe, we plan on, with your approval on the 3rd, entering into a contract with them, they would have bid documents for us late fall, in the fall timeframe, with an anticipation of going out to bid no later than January 1st, which would then have a construction start of April 1st, in order to get the cofferdam in place. So it's kind of, we were trying to back in to make sure that we met that deadline for that cofferdam and that we were all in the same, it's not a permanent, nothing was set in stone, but just more of an etched on, on a napkin, just making sure both, we were, we were comfortable with it and they were comfortable with our expectation.
So there's a date, after which you can't install the cofferdam, and there's a date before which you can't remove the cofferdam.
Right.
So we're, we're planning around this, so that we meet those dates, so we can get this done next year. So the intent is to get this, we've been talking about this project for a little bit, a couple of years, several years now, and so the intent is to get this done next year. Okay? Counselor Norris?
Couple of things. One, is it possible to get written the differences between at least the two lower bids, the one 32 and the one 63, before Friday?
Can we do it?
Yeah, we can put us, we can put a summary sheet together.
So that's one thing. And then the second thing is, procurement-wise, if the bidding on something different, because that's what I'm hearing, do our procedures not say, wait a minute, we need to redo this, so that we are bidding on the same things, or these companies are bidding on the same things?
We, we didn't give them guidelines as far as a timetable, per se, we, they had the drawings, and they used their estimates as to what they felt the construction was going to be, and that's why we did try to true them up, because there's a time and material, where we tried to make the analysis of, okay, they only had 640 hours proposed, this bid had 1,500, so if we true them up, where, where do they fall out? They still were the low bid, so it gave us comfort that. Now, if they were 640, and we true them up to the 1,500, and they came in at 500,000 based on that, then we'd want to definitely take a step back and look at it, and say, is it truly feasible from the time period? But we did try to true them up in that standpoint, to make sure we're looking at it equally.
Sure. Did we not also have onsite inspection with them? I mean, sometimes for projects, we'll bring them, so the, the vendors, the people that are bidding can come onsite or ask questions or, or whatever, to get a better understanding of what the project is.
Yeah, there was a pre-bid meeting, and then there was a Q and A that was.
Okay.
A few weeks back.
So does that help answer your question?
Yeah, because if there was a pre-bid meeting, and you're still getting these gigantic differences, but I'm just curious, because there's got to be, and I think you alluded to this, I just need to see it, to analyze it, or to think about it.
Sure.
Because if we're just talking time, based on, like the deputy mayor was saying, we're only talking $40,000, so that's why I'm like, what is the massive difference? Is it material, you know, is it, like you said, it was the inspections, but even the price that were given for inspection sounds like unusually high? So that, I'm just trying to figure out, was the bid specs clear enough, the, the site visit was obviously happened, but I just feel like there was something missing, I don't know.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Depot?
What is going to be our planned contingency amount for this?
Additional money?
Yeah, so usually we do 10%, 15%, 20%, depending on the risk we think of the bid going higher or lower.
For the whole project, you're saying, or just for this piece?
For this piece.
Inspection and that.
We're going to take a look at it, and we'll have something for you for, for next week as part of that summary, especially based on with them being lower in the hours, we don't want to stick with that 640, so we'll probably budget more on the higher side. But again, we'll, we'll take a look at that and, and come back to you with a number and with our explanation as to why and how we got there.
And we received approval for money from the state for this project, right? Can you remind me what that number is?
Yes, so they have, the State Board Commission approved 2.7 million for the replacement of the seawall.
Okay.
And the town has authorized 1.8, right, I think, or 1.4?
I don't know if they've authorized, they committed to...
Well, they committed, you're right, they did, they committed that amount through ARPA funds, but once, so, we have $2.7 million for the project. Once we find out what their true value of the project is, we will then go to the town for the difference to get paid.
Yep.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just looking at the, even with a 20% contingency, it's still under $200,000 to go with the lower quote, so, obviously, certainly makes sense, but I am interested to see the summary as Counsel.
And we can, we can get that to Counsel, right?
Thank you.
Not a problem. So, and if, and if you have other questions, get them to me, so I can get them to, to Ron, so we can get this answered. And there is a, we do want to try to move this forward, that's why I brought it tonight, even though you don't have all the information, knowing that there be questions, that we need to take lookups and get back to you on. But if you're not comfortable on Monday, then don't, 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 what we'll do is, instead of voting against it, we'll move it to another meeting, so that, but we should have all the information that you need by then, so we answer your questions.
And we'll also, with that summary, I'll also include their, their price sheets as well, so you can see their detail of what they submitted as part of the proposal.
Right. And that'll give you additional information, which is similar to what you normally get. Counselor Carter?
So, I'm just a little confused, I guess, about what the major concern is. We have somebody underbid, and you recommend them, you've done the research, and you've called them to make sure that they know what they're getting into, so I guess I'm just confused why we're even...
Well, I, so it's important to me that, that council does their due diligence to make sure staff, me and staff, are doing what we're supposed to do. So I don't have an issue with the questions, we will provide you with additional information that we normally do, for example, the bid sheets and the comparison of the information, we'll get that to you, so that all the council can feel like they have the information that they need in order to make a good decision. So that's, that's the way that I'm looking at it.
All right, I just don't want it to affect the timeline, you know?
If, if we have to move it a week or two, I think we'll be okay, right? Heidi, I should be okay on the timeline? Okay.
Yeah.
Based on what I was briefed this afternoon, a couple of weeks change if we have to. Obviously, of course, I'd like to get it approved, but if we need to move it, we'll move it, and it's more important to me that we do it right than we do it fast, right? Because there's always plenty of time to do it again. So I don't want to do that, I want to make sure we're doing it right.
I was just making sure I wasn't missing something.
No, you're not, you're okay. Counselor Norris?
The phrase you used, "underbid," is exactly the question that I'm asking, so, because not that this is the case, but a few times, low bid ends up being a lot higher than we assume it to be, so I just want to be, be able to have a level of comfort to say.
Yeah.
Yep.
No, I understand, I just, I thought I was missing something, because I, they, to me, I, they answered those questions as far as what, so I just, you know.
I felt comfortable, they had many jobs that they'd done around seawalls, dams, cofferdams, that type of thing, and that might be their advantage. I, I felt comfortable. They had mu- many jobs that they'd done around seawalls, dams, cofferdams, that type of thing, and that might be their advantage.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay. Hearing none. Take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting at seven, three, twenty-three?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, extension motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Okay. Economic development, Bridge Street and North Street Gateway update. This is informing. So, we don't, we're not gonna need a vote on this for, this is just informing and updating.
Yes, just, just informing and then we'll.
Was that? Yes. Yeah, it's in your packets.
Okay.
Sierra, that doesn't, uh, hold on. I don't think that made it. Let me look in here real quick. No, the, the, the diagrams, you have the drawings.
There's three other sheets that I'm gonna give you guys. It gives the description of the project. There is a letter from the CROG of the update of our grant award that was part of this initiative, as well as.
Okay, so thank you everyone for your time. We just wanted to take this time to give you an update of where we are at on the Bridge Street Gateway project. We have been working on this since 2021. We received an active transportation grant from the Connecticut Department of Health to work with a consultant. Street plans to actually talk about complete street designs, pedestrian bicycle improvements and ways that the city could actually start to make those improvements using the gateway, Bridge Street Gateway as an example and a pilot of what that actually can look like. So, over the last couple of years, we have been brainstorming with consultants, getting feedback from communities, working with staff members, just to generally understand what type of improvements could be made here. We are proposing some type of demonstration at this intersection. That is a new approach that the city would be looking at doing. That new approach comes with some general understanding and setting of a good, strong foundation for us to actually move forward with and just dealing with a few of the weeds and trying to make this process as, as smooth as possible, even though it's new. So, in essence, we are looking at the Bridge Street and North Street intersection. It serves as the gateway of the city. It is the exit from I ninety-five. The purpose of this project is to demonstrate and evaluate elements of potentially a larger kind of modification to the traffic patterns that start to incorporate elements for safer pedestrian and bicycle crossings at this intersection. Please feel free to chime in every. Tonight, I just wanted to give an overview. We can go through a few of the details. If you guys have comments, I can take those. If not, I'd highly encourage you guys to come back tomorrow night where we can actually go through everything in more detail. Giving respect for your meeting this evening. So, within the plans, you will notice modifications to the pack, to the traffic patterns, increasing safety for pedestrian and cyclists. We are looking to decrease speed but increase traffic flow. We kind of will talk about that a little bit more. We are improving the appearance of, and the function of the city's gateway. We are creating consistent traffic lanes and markings that kind of help with that flow and, and navigation through the intersection. Before we get into the plans, I did just want to give you, just explain this letter from the CROG. We did start this project with them in twenty twenty-one. We were originally awarded forty-six K for the entire design of plans and the demonstration. During the time that we accept this award, we were all, the city of Groton was working on some major road construction. So, in light of that, we actually postponed the demonstration portion. So, this letter kind of explains how this got split into two different years of their funding and kind of where we're at in the process of that. We will be following up with you guys at another meeting to kind of hash out exactly what that budget is, what our new timeline is leading up to this September twenty-ninth date and what are, where we're at in the processes to kind of get this project, the demonstration of this project completed. Were there any questions on any of the, I know I'm kind of speeding through this, I'm sorry. If there are any questions on anything that I shared thus far, then we'll dig into the plans itself.
Councilor Norris?
I, I'm sorry. Trying to read through this memo here that you got from, what is the difference that they're talking about? Because it says here in the bottom of, one, two, three, the third paragraph, the city will be responsible for contracting with and paying the difference to the consultants. What's the difference that we're talking about?
So, if the grant, we're going to get to the details exactly what that difference would be for, for an updated budget. But in essence, the award pays for a significant portion of the consultant's design work. They will actually be coming out to do some of the labor and then that would be in, in kind with our work or potentially other departments as well. And then this helps pay for some of the materials. So, on our side, if anything, it may be a contribution to some materials and then our in-kind work to help with the actual physical installation of the demonstration. Not as, at this precise moment, but I will be following up with that information soon, very soon.
Any other questions so far? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Well, mine is less of a question, just more of a statement. I, I think it's really helpful to keep bringing these updates. I know it's a pain to come to meetings, but for me, you know, when residents, if they mention things on this corridor, it's nice to be able to say, oh, we just got an update and, you know, we're, this is kind of where we are in the phase. So, I really appreciate you guys bringing us the updates and the drawings are very helpful to know like where, what we're kind of thinking. I do think, you know, updating on the roads really updates an area. Because I, I drive around a lot and you can tell where people spend their money updating the roads to make signage clearer and all that stuff. And it really does make a difference when you're driving around. So, I'm, I'll be excited when we get closer to doing it. But I'm, I'm excited that we're looking at this kind of wholly and looking at solving some of the issues around here because it's, we have a lot of traffic in this whole area. So, it'll be nice to have it streamlined a little bit and more thought through how we're doing everything. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Sierra?
All right. So, you'll notice on the first page, this is an overall plan of everything that the consultants looked at, all the way from Fairview, beginning of Thane Street, leading down Bridge Street, up North Street to Washington Park. And so, they wanted to look at overall like the connection points for pedestrians and cyclists. We didn't want to just look at one intersection, which we, we're really just focused on the Bridge Street and the Broad Street intersection. We want to show what that possibility of connection could look like leading to Washington Park and Thane Street. But for today's discussion, we are only going to be looking at where on this map is a white building, which is currently right now Alpha Auto and then up to Broad Street. So, that would be our phase one of the installation and then we'll just work through, through those improvements. We'll skip down to SC, which is on the bottom. And then you will start to notice the green is the incorporation of bike lanes. This intersection does connect to the Gold Star pedestrian path. The Gold Star pedestrian path is currently closed, but we know it will be reopened in the future. And there has been great strides both from our current leadership here in the city of Groton and the city of New London to work with the state to continue that pedestrian and bicycle connection across the bridge. So, even though it's closed now, let's just continue the conversation of what that actually looks like when people enter or exit into the city. So, the green indicates the bike lanes. The yellow tannish color starts to incorporate the islands or kind of pedestrian refuge spaces. You'll notice an addition of a proposed crosswalk.
And just for those of you who are not, may not be aware, that crosswalk tends to be where people do cross in the evening anyway. And so, we're trying to, we're trying to incorporate what is sometimes referred to as paths of, of preference, where people will actually walk. That's where they feel comfortable walking, where that's where they tend to walk. And so, we're trying to see what happens if we legitimize that.
You also start to notice that there is some narrowing of the roads, of the lanes. And there is actually a, um, lane that will be turning, that usually turns on to I ninety-five that we're actually proposing removing for the demonstration, just to try to narrow the, narrow the lanes, calm traffic down, kind of slow things down. We, we know that this may cause some backup in traffic at certain times within the day. Obviously, first thing in the morning and definitely between that two and four window when EB comes in and out. But we do want to just make sure that we are planning for twenty-four hours of the city and how people use the space, including that timeframe of how we deal with the traffic and congestion coming in and out. But also, what do we do with the other twenty hours of the day and how do we use the space?
Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just have a question directly related to that. So, the traffic light there, is that our light or is that a state traffic light?
So, the lights are controlled by the city, but we will have to work with the state on any changes or anything that will be done. We know that GEU is in the process of looking at some upgrades to the infrastructure for the lighting there, so we're hoping that this kind of help feeds into that discussion that they're having as well.
Because I, I'm thinking that, you know, narrowing the lanes and only having one feeder lane onto the highway from there might be effective in combination with maybe assessing the light pattern. Like that might, we might have to do that to make it work, but it might work. I, because I like the idea of getting traffic to slow down there. And I agree with, you know, assessing the road use for twenty-four hours, not just two hours during the day. We've got to be aware of that, but, you know, I don't know the last time this was assessed. And I know driving patterns change over time, so that might work really well. And I like the idea of having the buffer zone in the middle because sometimes that area can be dangerous because the cars are right next to each other.
We have spoken to Public Works and Steve Schaub, who is in charge of traffic lights and such. And so, we are, we are connecting with everybody within the city as well as the state that has something to do with this and have been for several months.
Councilor Sheffield?
Sierra, do you think with the two lanes that I see coming up Thanes to take, to get on to the highway, instead of the three lanes that it currently is, would that create backup going towards EB, taking away that lane?
So, there honestly is the potential that this could create some extra congestion. But we also want to, we're partnering this with a lot of community education and trying to get more of our commuter traffic to take the Clarence B. Sharp Highway, which is traditionally what in the city's minds and how we kind of design things, we, that is for the major traffic in and out. And this to become kind of more of a community gateway, kind of less traffic. Granted, we know that by nature, people are going to be trying to get in and out of the city however quickly they can. But hopefully, this helps them slow down, maybe stop at a restaurant or something before you're trying to sit straight out of the city. We do want to get people in and out, but the also primary goal is to kind of help with other traffic and provide means for other users to be on the road as well. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's, I kind of, you know, get to jest.
Just want to add one thing. One of the things that we've been looking at is the distinction between speed and flow. And most people perf, yes, they like to go fast to get home or to get to wherever they're going. But what they really like is to be able to be moving and not stopped, and that's the flow. And so, as long as we can keep people moving and they can see where the light is or where the stop sign is or whatever it is that's making them stop, we know that it's keeping that flow going that will actually help to reduce the road rage and will keep people moving. And so, that's another thing that we're going to be looking at with these.
Yeah, as a, as a follow-up to that, I guess we have to make sure the lights are frequently so that flow is consistent. Obviously, if it's a long light, you're gonna get backup all the way.
And we've been working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor McCain?
I like the thought that you brought up, hopefully that this might encourage the use of Clarence B. Sharp, which is really intended to get EB and laser traffic in and out of the city and maybe reduce the traffic because it's not as convenient along Thane Street and keep that on Bridge Street and keep that, you know, more of a residential kind of area.
Councilor Carter?
I, um, and I don't recall if this was accurate or not, but I remember when, um, former councilor Beckford was on the council and he had mentioned that, um, at some point EB, as far as like the trucks and whatnot, they weren't supposed to even go down Bridge Street. And I can see why, because there's no space that there is now. Now, we're talking about narrowing, so it's almost, and I, I live right there. And I, I see traffic stopped and it's like a, a mess there. But we don't have anything that says no trucks or nothing like that, no, you know? That would, there's, it would make sense for them to just naturally go take Clarence, take Clarence B. or go through, was it North Road or whatever? Because they're supposed to use that back gate anyway. I don't know if it was confirmed that that was an actual thing, but I think that, that's something that especially with this implementation, that there should be signs that say there's no trucks allowed, you know?
I absolutely agree. That has come up in our conversations. From our understanding, trucks are not supposed to be using Thane Street to go down. There are some exceptions for the delivery that happens, but traditionally, I think GPS just sends people the shortest way and the truck drivers just take that. There are no signs, to your point, that navigate. So, that is something that we do want to incorporate into the demonstration to actually eye out those signs so that if you do happen to get off on Bridge Street, that there's clear indication that if you are truck, you go up North Street.
It's like local, like if you're getting furniture dropped off or your Paul's boss or something, you're getting, like, like local. But EB, there's no reason why EB should be bringing big tanks.
I agree with you. There used to be a no-truck sign there and there used to be a GWT, grocery tonnage sign as well. So, let me find out what's going on and what happened to those signs. That's something we can do now, you know, without having to go through this. Any other questions or comments at this point? Councilor P. Isaac?
Thank you. So, the intention of taking out the lane coming from Thanes to Bridge up, would you actually be practicing that in any way, trialing it in any way before it would actually be pushed through? Where you would down the lane and?
So the demonstration we're proposing would be the trial. So the demonstration could last anywhere between a month to two months. And it's paint, planters, anything that can be easily removed. But it'll give us the opportunity to test it and see, does this work? And then that will give us the information, say, whatever the lessons learned, how can we start to move this design or a design forward using the information that we learned from this?
And I would imagine too that preparing for this trial, that communication would go out to help the employees of EB to use Clarence B., however that's going to be.
Yep, there'd be communications to residents, to EB, to Pfizer's, to Yukon Avery Point. There'd be a whole communications push. Once we get area residents, once we get a little bit more firmed up on our dates, we have to kind of go through a permit process with the state. So once we solidify that and we kind of know those, that information, we'll make sure that that is communicated with everyone.
So we have bi-weekly meetings with Electric Boat. It includes their safety people, their security people. It includes our Public Works, our planner, not planner, builder, building inspector, police fire. And we talk about issues associated with Electric Boat. And one of the things we've done in the past is we've given them information to push out to the employees. They either push out either via email or via text or on bulletin boards. There's multiple ways they push out. So we will be doing, using our venue to push out information to them. Anything else?
We do also hope to have signs up early, you know, before it, before it starts saying, you know, new traffic pattern. New traffic pattern coming soon.
Okay, so we were on S three. If we move over to S four, you will notice, obviously, that lane closure goes all the way to the intersection. You will also notice some bike crosswalks that include, for both pedestrians and bike lanes and how that space would be shared. And then a number of curb extensions with the yellow to kind of create more of a pedestrian refuge space for the, for the pedestrians. We, for the leak off into, that comes off of I ninety-five, basically kind of keeping it the same as is. But we are going to work with the property owners over there where there's a curb cut for an interest into their plaza to potentially close that off with some planters temporarily. That way you don't have competing traffic where you have pedestrians trying to cross, people trying to come off of the highway and then people trying to enter and exit into a stopping complex, all at one stop sign. That is there. And then. Yeah, I thought to say, I think that kind of explained it.
Councilor Sheffield.
Okay, that gray strip from the edge there, the yellow right to the median, I guess where that pedestrian spot is, is that going to be, is that a crosswalk there? Right at the intersection of Bridge and then the highway ramp? There's the long crosswalk going all the way across to the other side. But I see the gray strip right at, I guess, pretty much at the light with the two lanes. Is that a crosswalk?
Oh, is the stop bar?
Yeah, that mark, that gray marking, is that a, will that be a crosswalk or is that just a marker?
It's just.
Right here.
Are you talking about right here that's on that kind of triangle?
Is that market where, like, it's actually the stop bar?
It is a stop bar.
Okay. That's not for pedestrians to get to that median of pedestrian?
No, that, no, that is just a stop bar for the cars. If anything, the pedestrians wouldn't really be trying to use this to, as a safety, they would be crossing where the green and the gray.
Okay, so they got to go kind of outside of the zone to get to the crosswalk.
Yeah. You said it's a little tight?
Yeah, it's kind of tight for the, for the walking as far as traffic. Just in case, hopefully no one's bold enough to make a U-turn there. But I'm saying, you know, you have a space between that pedestrian area and the crosswalk to where they're walking out into the street.
They're walking on the crosswalk.
Yeah, but you're, you're walking here, the space here between that median and the crosswalk.
They're walking here, they're not wa, that's the stop bar for the cars.
Right, but I'll say if people are walking.
They're not walking in there.
Okay, so that's, there's no walking area.
No, there's no walking, there's no driving.
Okay.
That's not, that would be not utilized.
Okay, I thought that was pedestrian. Okay, all right, so that median in the middle is not for pedestrian access?
No, not at that.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, I may have said something that triggered that confusion. Sorry.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilor Norris.
Well, the, the state is considering some signal change regulations that affect both folks on bicycles and cars making right turns at stoplights, all that kind of stuff. If that happens in February, I think they're looking at getting this going. Will that affect anything here that we're discussing?
That's February of twenty twenty-four?
Yeah.
So this will be, no, it will be implemented in twenty twenty-three. But we will take that information into consideration.
Sure, thanks.
All right, so moving on to S five. You see that we are coming up North Street. Continuing with, on North Street, there is, there's one lane on North Street that's going towards I ninety-five that is relatively wide. We're just kind of narrowing that down to kind of a more traditional width to the street and that adds some more pedestrian space. And also will add potentially for the bike lane or route to start to go up North Street and down Mitchell Street. We are still kind of in the works of discussing the, whether or not bike lanes need to be on both sides of the road or whether you have a two-way on one side to navigate traffic, if that makes sense. Any thoughts or anything on that?
Yeah, I would prefer on each side because bikes should be going with the traffic and not against it. So I wouldn't put two lanes on one side and rioting up, going into the traffic. That, that would make.
On North?
Yeah.
Would you agree where it should be on? It should go with traffic is what you're?
So I think you do go with traffic.
Correct.
If you're not in a bike lane, if you're in a bike lane, the bike lane is for bikes and you can go either way on bike lanes. So, you know, again, these are concepts. There's going to be a trial period. This is not being implemented forever amen, that kind of thing.
On both sides.
Like they have on Route twelve?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
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 Deputy Mayor Devoe.
Well, I was just going to say as a driver, I don't bike that much on the road. But when you're driving, you don't expect a bike to be riding at you. So I feel like it is, is odd, but it does work on twelve. I have seen bike, you know, bikes going both ways on twelve before. So it'd be interesting to see the data that comes out of the trial for that. Because I would be inclined to set, to have one on either side because that seems to make more sense in my head. But then it also depends on what fits logistically best. Because you're taking up a lot of room by doing the two separate lanes probably. But to me, it makes more sense to keep them on opposite sides of the road, but.
Councilor Piazza.
I mean, as far as the bike, I mean, if you have actual bike lanes, say similar to Route twelve, I think it makes more sense to leave it to one because when you're, when you're going to come down and cross, if you have somebody, if you have two separate, the ones going, I guess you would say, south. I'm not even sure if that's correct. But going toward the crosswalk there, so they have to come down, navigate that area there, cross and then cross. You know what I mean? Where if you have a bike path, a bike route similar to Route twelve, where they can go back and forth, then it's just a one-way.
One-way.
And then it's a much easier crossing there. It's just a one-cross.
Councilor Carter, you got a comment?
Better safety and so forth.
Yeah, it's a comment. Could you look, could you also look into, and I just thought about this probably about a month ago? I called one of the city officers. Going on North, North, North Road, going south, there's residential along that line, along that whole side. But there, there, there isn't signs that, that don't say no parking. And there's one car that parks there every once in a while on North Road.
Okay.
And I've noticed.
Like a cross from Ortega's?
No, on the hill, going up the hill. Or was that going up the hill?
Across from Advance, improvements.
So going up the hill where there's a park?
Yep.
There's Washington Park going up the hill.
Okay.
That's Mitchell way.
Yeah. Okay.
Mitchell Street, going up Mitchell Street. So if you're going south, if you're going up the hill, right? There's red, all residential on that side. There's a park on the left side. There's the one lane, but if you park there, right? Cars have to go around you and they go on, they slightly go into oncoming traffic to go around cars parked there. And technically legally, they can't park there. Nobody does, but it's common to stop to park there. But there's one particular vehicle that I see parked there regularly. But there's no sign saying that they can't park there.
Correct. Yeah, talk to me offline about that and address it.
Oh, yeah, and you couldn't put a bike lane?
Well, I guess, well, we're not talking about bike lanes there.
But I'm saying.
We'll talk about that later. I understand.
Yeah, that's, that's beyond the scope of where we're studying right now.
Let's stay with the presentation we have today.
Go ahead.
And then you'll notice for six, for S, for S six A, and then you guys should also have an S six B. It starts to kind of look at the bike lanes, what they can potentially look like continuing down North Street. So that discussion of on both sides or whether it's a two-way and et cetera, et cetera. And we, I definitely want to be respectful of you guys' meeting. So I encourage you guys to come out tomorrow. Leslie and I will be here in this room and we'll be able to go into details about all of this info.
Sadly, I think we'll all be at the dinner tomorrow night, the, yeah, the W A C P dinner tomorrow night, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
That's the heads up.
All right, moving this forward, any other questions or comments on this? Okay, all right, thank you, Sierra. Thank you, Leslie. Okay, the water taxi, Thames River Heritage Park donation. So Thames River Heritage Park has reached out and asked for their annual donation. They've increased it from ten thousand to twelve thousand five hundred. They've reached out to us, New London and the Town of Groton. And New London and the Town of Groton have already provided the twelve thousand five hundred. And I'm bringing it to you guys for our donation for the water taxi.
Councilor McCabe.
I just want to make a comment. I think this water taxi is a great addition to what the city offers. I enjoy it immensely and I know they've been working hard to increase the different types of tours that you can take. And I feel, and for supporting this endeavor.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the water taxi? Deputy Mayor Devoe.
I just, I agree with Councilor McCabe. I do think the water taxi is a great asset to the area. It does look like their ask has increased since last year.
That's correct.
I, I guess I kind of wonder, like, I understand that they're interested in getting buy-in from the local, you know, from Groton City, New London and Groton Town. I'd be curious maybe, and I know we've supported this for many years. I'd be curious maybe next year if we could have them come in and do a presentation. Again, I know that they have been here before. Because I have some questions that I don't think that are for our finance director or, or the mayor's office in terms of like, do they intend to, in perpetuity, be asking for these donations? Because we, we might be at a place right now where we can send this money, but what if we're not always able to do that? Are they looking at other funding sources? Is their goal to always be dependent on these funding sources? Or is their goal to be sourced by other grants or are they, you know, that kind of thing?
Yep, and I have some questions, some answers for you, but I will bring them in. So Groton Utilities, as part of a long-range plan, provided ten thousand dollars this year and has done so for the last five or six years. All right, Ron?
Yeah, so just kind of the, I'll just give a quick, brief history on the donations. So this, first, to clarify, this is not part of the resolution of the five thousand dollar donations that go to local organizations that you approve from that standpoint. So just, it's a separate piece. However, it does come out of that same fund. So this is not funded through the taxes. It's funded through the Fund Two O Four, the Community Development Fund, which is, the revenue stream there is the C-MAC generators, the rental for that property. So that's, that's the, where this money is coming out of that fund. So in two thousand and sixteen, the city did two, these are fiscal years. Two thousand and sixteen, the city's piece of it coming out of that Two O Four Fund donated twenty thousand. There's two ten thousand donations, one in October, one in May. Fiscal year seventeen, there was one from Groton Utilities of ten thousand, one from the city of ten thousand. And that happened in fiscal seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. For lack of a better, it happened in twenty. We, the, the twenty-one was delayed on the city side to twenty-one. So, so since seventeen through last year, both Groton Utilities and the city donated ten thousand dollars apiece to it, just kind of as a, just the history of it.
And to add to the answer about additional funding, so they have lobbied for, and in the last few years, they've gotten a hundred thousand dollars a year from the state of Connecticut. And in this year's budget for the next two years, they're going to get, receive a hundred thousand dollars a year for, for each of the years, the next two years for funding from the state. It's in the, it was DOT, now it's been moved to D E E P funds in a miscellaneous account. So does that answer your question? Any, any other questions or comments on this? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of seven, three, twenty-three.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries. Okay, the next thing is ARPA premium pay. So if you go to your sheet, this spreadsheet, the very last line item talks about premium pay for the employees. And that value is right now thirty-one thousand dollars. Now, if you notice up at the top under Fire Department Premium Pay and Police Department Premium Pay, so they have premium pay. And then what we did was, we, I had all the other employees, I went to all the department heads and then we validated this through a payroll look. And anybody that worked through the COVID period, then we're looking to give them a thousand dollars a year based on the Connecticut program that came out that says if you weren't eligible, you can have a thou, you can have a thousand dollars a month, a thousand dollars, sorry, under the, not a thousand dollars a month, a thousand dollars under that program. So we verified there were thirty- So, uh, we verified there were thirty-one employees that worked through the COVID period and didn't have special deals. Now, let me define special deals. In some cases, we allow, and so basically if you didn't work from home. Because we had MOUs that, uh, we allowed people to work al- work from home for a week, they stayed at home for a week, we paid them. And then they came in and we rotated them through, because in the very beginning, we didn't know how bad the COVID was gonna be. So we were trying to protect crews, we're trying to set up crews, and that's what we did. So that's where the thirty-one thousand dollars is. So the sheet that you have here, this is all of our, the requests. So we're at three million, seven hundred ninety-five thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars and twenty-one cents. That's the request. We have a total of two point six million dollars that we can spend. So your task as the council is to decide what it is, what projects you're going to support. And we're gonna, we're not gonna start that tonight, but we are gonna start it soon. So my question is, uh, the, the tenth would normally be a committee meeting. Because it's the first month of the, of the new quarter. Are, are the committees scheduled to meet? Are there any committee meetings that are gonna happen? Because if you're not gonna have a committee meeting, I'm gonna ask you to have a special committee of the whole. So we can start in earnest talking about, uh, uh, start talking about ARPA funds and ARPA requests. And then we will be scheduling other special meetings in order to get through this list. Councilor Sheffield?
I don't believe there's anything out of group two, but I thought we were supposed to have something last month. Tentative for group, but I guess it was, it was canceled, so I wasn't sure if it was moving up another month or to have them, so I'm not sure. But I mean, if not, it's fine with just the, uh, you know, with the special.
So in the beginning of the year, remember we said?
Yeah, we've been had like quarterly.
Well, the first, yes, the first correction, the second Monday of the first month of the quarter, we're gonna have committee meetings. And then the second and third months, we will have special cows, special committee of the halls. I'm asking you if you don't have committee meetings scheduled. If you don't have one, then I'm gonna recommend we move a special committee of the whole. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I personally would prefer not to cancel our group meetings since we, at least for group one. Are we group one? Um, but I, but, but I think, um, the three of us can also figure out a time, a different time. Then if you wanted to do a six PM committee of the whole meeting, we can certainly arrange around that to do our group meeting that week at a different time. I, I think everyone would be fine with that.
We get the tenth.
That's the one I have a training class at night in Rhode Island after work.
That's fine. But if we have a special committee of the whole, and what I'm looking to do is I, I wanna give it a little bit of structure. We'll keep, we're gonna, we're gonna keep it at an hour, right? That way we don't go too long, people don't get tired. Uh, it's a lot to look at, but what I would like you to do is to get your question, loo- look at this information that I have. That you have, and then get your questions to me ahead of time. That way I can get them to the, get them to staff to be answered. That way our first, our meetings are not spent trying to ask questions that people aren't prepared for. Instead, we'll have the answers ready for you, for council. Is that reasonable? Okay? Alright. Anything else?
Are we talking about the ARPA stuff? Are we talking, are we talking, because we, we shifted from talking about the, uh, the premium pay to ARPA funds, so do we have to?
Premium pay is part of the ARPA, it's one of the line items?
I know that, so, but you said anything else, so I don't know if you.
No, is there any, anything else? Anything else on this discussion item about ARPA? Because I'm getting ready to move to something else. Because I'm not, I'm not.
He was telling us about a new line item on the ARPA funds for a new set of.
Oh, this is just information, it's not moving?
Right.
It's not moving to you?
No.
Okay, I got you.
So we're gonna have a special committee of the whole so that we can have a thorough discussion, deliberation, debate on the ARPA projects. And that'll be in a future, a future meeting.
So the premium thing isn't, isn't moving, that's just, that's just a, okay, I got you.
That's correct.
Just, it's not, okay, got you.
Right, that's correct.
So then all, all you want us to do is just think of questions we want to ask in reference to the ARPA projects?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I do have one question with the, uh, premium pay. So, um, you said thirty-one pe- people. Is that active people or are those retirees that happen to work or is that, um, to be council people in as well?
So anybody that was here during that period of time, so there may be some ex-employees that are in there. But most of them, most of them are current employees, right?
There's a, there's a few retirees. I believe we used the timeframe of March twenty twenty to January of twenty-one.
Right.
Yeah, we, we just did that with, and we had a ton of retirees and they, they are surprised if they got checks.
Well, and, and in the police and the fire, we have some retirees in there as well. And my logic behind that was, you know, you did your time, you deserve, right? So, and I think I can, I can convince council, yeah, absolutely, if I need to. Uh, Councilor Norris? Okay, the, the music stops and you can sit down.
So with, with the premium pay, do we have any employees that are getting ready to retire? Soon? And if yes, would they still receive the premium pay if they were to leave in the next?
I mean, we have employees that have retired, that once this is approved, they will receive the pay. So it goes back, if you did your time, I'm, I'm gonna, my recommendation is that we, uh, acknowledge that with the side. Okay, alright. So with that, I need a motion to. Oh, go ahead.
Before you go in, I just made some quick copies for the council and what's in here, just so, so you know, so you have it again to help with some questions that you may have. This is back to, to Shore Ave. It's the, the bid packet, it's the price proposal and the task for GZA. Along with the, the price, um, list from SLR and BL companies. Just so that way at least you can start looking at it and then we'll get that summary together.
You can go ahead and pass it to the council. If you have an extra one, I will take one, but. Okay. Thank you, Dan. Alright, so with that, I would like to have a motion to add an executive session to the agenda. To enter into executive session pursuant to CGA, Connecticut General Statute, one dash two hundred six alpha to discuss personnel, police, and that's to add it to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Okay, now I need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute one dash two hundred six alpha to discuss personnel, police, to include the council and Captain Lito.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries. Okay, we are in executive session. We're gonna stay here.